Fifteen minutes after three, want to welcome everybody here. And first thing is public comments, no public comments for the work session. Moving on to the regular meeting agenda items, item one is to discuss. Any regular meeting agenda items for tonight's meeting, so council or staff. That we need to pull for further discussion, any discussion, no nothing?
I'm going to go up for any questions.
Mayor, item in on the.
Item in. Okay. Um, so nothing else. Mr. Chandler.
Yes, good afternoon and start with a quick update on fifty-six forty-two Pegasus Drive. Y'all will recall that this is warehouse office. And this was put back on the regular agenda to essentially answer a question about buffering and screening. And actually, the developers are here and I presume you'll be at the regular agenda as well. Yes, would you all like to introduce yourselves very quickly?
Hi, good afternoon, everyone. My name is Vida Vasipali. I'm the developer and I own this property. And I'm trying to construct the Flex Industry, Light Industry, Office Warehouse. And I'm looking for an approval from the zoning perspective. So I'm here to at least address any of the concerns or questions anybody have. And I also want to express a couple of.
Sounds good, thank you. And so here's the site plan and really the, the piece of property that's in question is the twenty-foot landscape buffer. So it's this section of the northern boundary and this section of the western boundary, uh, which is adjacent to existing single-family homes. Our case manager Shelby reached out to those two different property owners. And they provided their feedback and they, rather than the landscape buffer, they prefer a wall. Or densecrete and a precast concrete wall, which you know, something we had talked about at the last meeting. And that, so our recommendation is to do either of those. It would probably be a precast eighteen concrete wall. And so it'd still have the buffer, the twenty-foot, just not the shrubs and the, and the trees. So it would, and my understanding is that y'all are, are okay with that with the condition of, I'll show you in a second. That I've got that written out, that buildings, I guess, buildings one, two, and seven, or you know, so by the end of, by the time those buildings are constructed, that's when the wall would go up, which, which seems to make sense. Is that in agreement with that?
Yes, so my original plan was to do buildings five and six, including the detention pond. That way, at least I can begin with those two work buildings. And then building three and four in the second phase. And at last phase would be building one, one, two, and seven. At that point of time, I do agree that I can, I can at least spend some additional dollar amount to the retaining wall. I mean, precast concrete wall.
So it just goes along one, two, and seven, correct, not along six?
That, that is correct, so the wall, yes, that, and that's, you know, much more likely future commercial. Does not have a house on it now. Uh, it does have a buffer requirement, just because the property is owned ag. Uh, but it's, it, you know, they're, they're providing the twenty-foot landscape buffer. And the proposal is for the wall adjacent to existing residential.
Thank you for working with us.
No, no problem. I love to work with you all, thank you.
Thank you.
So Brian, if for some reason that one, two, and seven aren't built, there'd be no screening?
Uh, so, good question, there should be. And so I, I don't know what that condition might look like.
What was the question?
Question is if, if seven, two, one, two, and seven were not built. The, the idea would, would not be to eliminate the buffer. And so, and so I think that's, that's a great question, to ensure that that buffer gets built. Or yeah, yeah, in this case, not installed, but built.
I would suggest the condition might say that it's installed with one, two, or seven, or a specific timeframe after the first building is constructed. Whatever, you know, council would find acceptable, but just having it open ended, you could end up with a project that was never screened.
Yeah. So, and, and so if you can think about that in terms of if you've got a recommendation on what that timing would be, of what's reasonable?
My original plan was to do this in a face manner. And so since the precast concrete wall came into picture, initial plan was to build one, two, one, three. So that I can slowly start building from the front, I mean, the concrete and everything. But since that came into picture, my, then I changed my plan to build five, six, and the detention pond. So that the front portion will be like really nice and looking. But when I start one, two, and seven, absolutely, before I complete, I think the, all the reading and everything will be complete by then. And at that point in time, absolutely, yes, I'm willing to do that, but in case if it gets delayed by, I mean. And the question is, will you be able to do some kind of buffering, right?
Yes.
So at that point of time, are you okay with the shrubs and trees?
I think we're looking for, if you don't build one, two, and seven, we want a, so a timeframe that you have to build the wall anyway. What kind of a timeframe do you think you'll be doing one, two, and seven?
Don't have a timeframe yet.
Do you want to start your project?
I need to apply for permits as well. So I'm still working with the civil engineer and the, who give me a quote on almost how much does it cost and everything. So once that is then, um, then I can at least give an estimate on when that could be. But I do agree that, I mean, it doesn't look good from a neighbor perspective, that if one, two, and seven are not started immediately, or maybe, I don't know when. But before even I, before even I start one, two, and seven, I am okay to, uh, with the shrubs and the trees. If that satisfies the purpose. But once I start building one, two, and seven, I'll, I'll retain the shrubs and trees and then start the retaining on the precast concrete wall. If that is okay.
So your, your preference is if one, two, and seven is not built. That you do not put a retain, you do not put the concrete wall in, just trees and shrubs?
Trees and shrubs, yeah. But when I start one, two, and seven, absolutely, yes, I mean, before even I start, I think I'll do the precast concrete wall.
How far did we decide the housing was from this property line?
Oh, honestly, I, I don't, all, um, it's hundreds. Hundreds of feet. And so are you saying then that you would be willing to install the truck, the shrubs and trees regardless, kind of even within that first phase? And then when one and two are, those buildings are constructed, you would also add the wall or the precast concrete? I mean, if that, is that, then we got to have it both ways.
Correct, so when I, before even I start one, two, and seven, I would do that, but I mean, I would wait until three, four is complete. Five, six is complete. At that point of time, yes, I mean, I would install the shrubs and trees.
I would, I would want a timeframe that you have to install the wall, whether you do want to install it or not, maybe.
And so, yes, if that, let's, let's just throw it out there, a two, let's say it's a two-year timeframe, if that's reasonable, or three. But if, you know, so that they have the assurance that the wall would get built, the neighbors have the assurance that the wall would get built within. Let's say it's three years, don't know, just throwing it out there. And then if there were a change to that timing, then you'd have to come back, council would have to be the ones to make that determination. So that it, you know, you still have a, an option, it's just they're the ones that would need to make that decision.
And so you guys have a preference on the timeframe?
That's why I was asking him what he thinks. I, I honestly would want it before three and four as well, and it's still, but. That's why I'm asking you what you think your time, what do you believe your timeframe is to get to the back four, should not just one, two, and seven, but three and four as well?
So like I said, I would like to do it in a face manner, but I don't have a timeframe yet. But once I do five and six, then only I'll be able to determine when I can do the three and four.
So.
We can say when you start with three and four, then we, we want that, so you're face two.
Cause the view is still going to be the same?
Yeah.
I need to have a date of certain, though.
That's.
I would, I would suggest that it's a date tied to the issuance of the building permit on buildings five and six. And whether that's, you know, a year, or two years, or three years, whatever you feel appropriate, you may think about that, 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 that is would be my recommendation is that you tie it to. The first, that, that the building permit on phases, but, or the first phase of construction would start, whatever appropriate timeframe you feel. But, but it also has to be in before, uh, three and four started, so really whichever one comes first would trigger that requirement.
And I want to say, since I haven't heard it, thought of time, I'm gonna say three years, but is that?
Um, can I say maybe three and five?
Five years is too long.
Five is too long?
Yeah. I think, I think anything, I personally think anything more than three years is too long.
That's my default.
If your circumstances change or your timeline changes, you will have the opportunity to come back to council. Explain that to them and then they could extend the timeline if you think that's appropriate, so it's not set in stone or precast concrete, but. You, you would have that option to come back.
So the reason I'm hesitant to give a data, with so many things going on, particularly with tariffs and all, right? Not all HVACs are available, it takes six months. So what would I do building, building three and four, and I don't have HVAC, right? So that's the reason I don't know how this all turns out to be, so. I mean, I've not thought that, but I mean, from all those things, and the material and whatnot, uh, I don't have a date, that's the reason I'm.
Yeah, and the other option is to just do it all upfront, if that's more, if you have more certainty is desired.
No, I've not budgeted for all of them.
I'm not comfortable leaving it open ending.
Yeah, I.
You can build three, five, and the detention pond and never do the rest, and we never get the buffer.
Put three years on it, he can come back and negotiate.
Okay, yeah. Okay, let's say three years for now, and then if some, something changes, I'll come back to the council and then give an explanation of yes or no.
I'm assuming the, uh, the asphalt or concrete work in front of one, two, and seven would not be done until those are built also. Right, you're not gonna, you're not gonna build both sides of the parking lot?
Now, if I do three and four, yes, I would do, uh, the parking lot for one and two as well. I mean, when we do the grading, I'm, I'm expecting the, to be done for the entire site.
Okay.
Uh, but concrete wise, I mean, I would leave it open. When I start three and four, I would do the concrete part everywhere.
All of it, as we see in the picture?
Correct, except the buildings.
No, no, I understand.
So the can, the condition would be that the precast concrete buffering needs to be done within three years of the building permit for. For the, whatever phase of construction starts, but then when building three and four, um, begin, that, that phase needs to include the precast. If that is within, is that, if that's before the three-year, it needs to go with that. If that's after the three-year, then the, the screening needs to happen independently, is that the?
That would be a motion, I would like, yes.
And before then, it can be unscreened. So.
Before they do, yes, or.
Or the three-year time passes, okay, I think that makes sense, Brian?
Yes, and that is from the time of building application.
And in the building permit issuance, to make that.
That's fair enough, so, so you, so you know that we're not just gonna sit on the permit.
That package.
We'd hear from others.
I don't have anything.
Well, here's making that motion better around all that then.
I think Brian is going to capture that, or Shelby has captured that and is going to put it on a slide for you.
Yes.
Okay. It's good, and, uh, all right, so, and I'll, I'll add to that, right now, just as applicants agree to install an eight-foot tall wall at this location. Number three, in lieu of trees and shrubs, so I'll, I'll add the clarification three years from building permit issuance. Or construction of three, they were wanting to, you know, uh, whichever comes first. Right?
Yeah. Yes. When we, legally standpoint, we make, since we had voted on it last time with that left out, if we just say, add that, the fence part? Or we have to read the whole thing again, say the whole thing again?
I think, um. I'm guessing, I think I understand what you're saying, but I think it's just clear to, to say the entire motion, to cover it all in one motion.
But you can have, um, Brian pull up this slide and he'll make, between now and the council.
If he says it all right. If you can say ask it.
Yeah, that's all you have to do.
Yeah, I don't know if Kathy would say you could just say ditto, but.
You can second.
There you go. All right, I guess before we leave that, any other questions on, on that project?
I just want to thank the developer, I know that that's, that adds time and that adds expense and complication and planning. That adds to the whole project, we are aware of that, and we very much appreciate your willingness to work with us.
I guess, yes, we do.
Thank you. All right, new zoning case, first reading eighteen-eighteen North Third Street. And really, this is a bit of cleanup. And so you can see on the right, single-family one and the general retail, the red box is what they want to clean it up. So moving general retail, this is at least the way it was advertised, moving to general retail line to, um, into the single-family one, create a cohesive, developable site. Staff is, uh, is recommending approval of that, uh, the single-family one, so it would be a little bit smaller. But what, what I really wanted to point out, well, here's the site, so. You can see it's also, you know, close to Lamar Middle School, which is just on the other side of the street. And so the original recommendation at P and Z was just recommend approval, they already have the general retail. But we have also with some other concerns that have come up, uh, related to uses in that corridor that are allowed in general retail under the current code. We had our pre-agenda meeting, you know, pre-council meeting with Bren and other staff, and reevaluated that to say. You know, perhaps neighborhood service would be better. And so we went back, P and Z, of course, recommended approval towards general retail, but since then, we went back, uh, to the owner. Asked whether neighborhood service would meet her needs, she said it would. And so that would eliminate, you know, gas stations, vape shop, and I know, you have vape shop slash smoke shop. Um, you know, other uses that are just not great near the school. And so they did, you know, the owner did agree to that, and so we're very appreciative to her. And, and so that's, that's kind of, that's how it's been left, and your, your staff report has been that, that information.
Thank you, Brian.
So, yeah, you bet, thanks for bringing that up, and, uh, you know, it's, it will inform our UDC amendments as well, so that's great. All right, so last one, this is, this is a biggie, so Cheryl's the case manager, she's here in case y'all have questions that I'm unable to answer. But this is the Severny, uh, tract. As we learned, that is, uh, check for north, so north side of town, that makes a lot of sense. Also at Pegasus and Moores Mill Road, hundred-and-twenty-two acres of a mixed-use development. And so it consists of the three tracts, one fifty-nine acres, uh, two almost nine, and then three at fifty-four acres. And so tract one, under contract, uh, by a developer, uh, tracks two and three, this is, I should point out, TDC is the applicant. So they own all of this property, they've got private developer, number one, under contract. And two and three would be conveyed back to the city in the future, and I just have a later date, y'all probably know more about that than I do. Uh, but the applicant is proposing a mixed-use, single-family, townhomes, multifamily, and general retail on tract one. And they've agreed to a plan development because they have a site plan that's, that's shown here. And, um, the multifamily two would allow max height of four stories, density up to twenty dwelling units. So tract one would include a maximum of forty-five percent multifamily, twenty percent single-family, thirty percent general retail. And then tracks two and three, you know, even though the city would, um, would, would have that property in the future. To go ahead and have a cohesive plan that, um, you know, if whoever it's sold to, or hey, if the city develops, we, you know. We would be subject to the same site plan requirements. And so also, the, the plan development conditions would clarify that the subdivision entrance standards, because. Right now, it's, you know, improved entrance for every, every hundred-and-fifty units. You know, two of those improved entrances for three hundred. But because this is such a large tract, uh, our code is silent on those upper levels of dwelling units. And so working with fire, particularly landing the fire marshal with public works, legal, you know, to say, what, what is that ratio that should apply? For, you know, a thousand units beyond, or really beyond three hundred units. Every hundred-and-fifty units would need to be served by an improved entrance to the applicant. Showing that, you know, is in agreement, but that makes a lot of sense, and honestly, I think when, as we work on the UDC update. That's one of the priorities is to update, uh, those entrance standards and probably apply a consistent ratio, because right now. It's silent, we may not have anticipated developments to the size, uh, when that was written. All right, and, uh, for standard stuff, uh, to multifamily use would only be allowed on tract one for the MF two standards. Minimum lot widths for single-family, lot width of forty-five feet, uh, instead of the, the fifty, with forty-foot, uh, widths allowed on cul-de-sacs or knuckles. Because, as you know, my cul-de-sac, those, uh, the lots are more fanned shape, and so we do our measurements at the building line. And so forty feet, you know, that, that is, that actually is pretty consistent with kind of the, the straight parts of the road. And those forty-five foot lots, duplexes will be prohibited. You know, section seven-seven-four for buffering and screening standards, you know, this is such a large concept. You know, the, the design is not at a point to where to say, look, we need to, we need to add a, a wall between this and a future, um, you know, farm. Uh, so just seven-seven-four would apply sidewalks, addressing those, you know, where they are required. Um, and then, let's see, it's pretty standard stuff, one, one tree minimum per dwelling unit requiring the front yard.
Did I see, I, I don't see it up here, but I, oh, no, it is, sidewalks required along Moores Mill, the most on that north side. Of Moores Mill?
Uh, yes, that, that is correct, so sidewalk, sidewalks required there, yes, ma'am. And what I didn't add here, but is, is very important, because that planning and zoning, uh, recommended approval, but it was by a split vote, five to four. And, and honestly, we didn't get a lot from them in, in terms of, uh, you know, Kyle and I, we need to have a talk with them, right? In, in terms of their reasoning for those who voted against it, you know, like to have that. Um, but we did follow up with the chair and, uh, you know, and her, her assessment is that there were concerns with Pegasus. As we know, especially from, uh, you know, Sri Dhar's project we just looked at, the office warehouse. Pegasus is substandard, not only adjacent to his project, but adjacent to this proposed project. Uh, but also there was discussion about property owner that lives here. And I've got photos, um, during the presentation that I'll show, but that, you know, one estate that is essentially surrounded by the development. And actually Cheryl has gone above and beyond to try to contact that owner to see if they had any concerns to win, heard from. And so what we're assuming is that nobody lives there. Um, but anyway, they, in terms of access, they have an easement. Which connects to Pegasus, but in terms of the. Construction, how it impacts them or that owner. Uh, and then just the other is just, I think there was just a lot, I think there, I think there was just, uh, you know, some confusion as to really what's going to happen here, even though there is a, a site plan. So thus the, the split vote.
Would those buildings that, that run along Pegasus right here, that future possible buildings, would they have a requirement to upgrade their portion of Pegasus?
That's a good question, and, I mean, that, that's not part of the condition at this point, and it's one of those that. I mean, I think we, we could have said to P and Z, hey, trust us, we're going to own that, but at the same time, you know, that, that's not necessarily the, the best way to, to handle it. But we, we will own that, and so in terms of whatever, uh, whatever needs to be done from a growth perspective, then, you know, we, we are certainly aware of it. Would work towards whatever improvements are needed in conjunction with the developer, just like any other development that comes in at that time, but. Hey, if that's something that we're ready to address now in some capacity, it's good.
It didn't make sense, I think, for us to put a, for your, for you to put a condition on you. At this point, uh, I think that's probably properly negotiated and, you know, a future economic development agreement, when we sell that property for development. And then, you know, and or just making kind of encouraging, um, the city and or the reinvestment zone to study Pegasus, because, I mean, ultimately. If you're requiring Pegasus to be approved by the owner of that property, that property owner is us. So it really just becomes a city project where you would want to look at it in a more holistic manner, related to your entire street infrastructure and where your priorities lie. So, you know, if anything, uh, you know, if you, if you wanted to state anything on the record related to Pegasus. My recommendation, other than a, a condition, since it'll be city-owned property, would be, you know, uh, just a, a statement of wanting to make sure that Pegasus is. Being planned for improvements that being considered in the capital program, or the Zions Capital Program.
Sure, okay.
That's great. And that's all I have, any other questions?
Anything, staff, any more additional comments? I like this process of going through these workshops, very helpful. Thank you all for that, I know it adds a little bit, but it helps us.
No problem, I'll get my previous assistant to write for that, so.
Very nice.
All right, next item is receive a presentation during the Parks and Recreation Department Strategic Plan from Project Consulting. Everybody's leaving, wait, come back. State Council there, uh, it's gonna be back at the furniture, been out for a little bit, getting the way worked on, and, uh, I suppose it could be, be back here. And I think, uh, I introduced Brian Trusty with Frost. Maybe almost all, everybody has, uh, participated with him in some surveys and visits and, uh, so it has been a long process. It's been a great process, trying to figure out, you know, uh, uh, they came in and, you know, they're the experts, they go all across the country, so they know the latest trends. They see the good, they see the bad and ugly, and, uh, so they help us get a, we're being there, look, hey, where have we been, where are we now, where are we going? And, uh, so I don't want to spend too much time up here because Brian's got a. And uh, so I don't want to spend too much time up here because Brian's got a uh, I see him do it a couple of times, it's a long presentation, but. It'll go by fast, but there's a lot of information, there's a lot of good information that we can now take and develop some work plans and goals, so. But with that, I'm Brian Trusty, uh, with Rose, thank you very much.
You're welcome.
Glad to be with you all again, mayor, members of the council, thank you for having us and for supporting this project. Uh, it's been about thirteen months since we actually first began the process with. Visiting with each of you all and getting some uh, your initial insights and guidance on the direction of the plan. Uh, I want to reiterate what Kevin said, it's not just about completing a strategic plan, it actually is reflective of a really strong process. We pulled, we interviewed and uh, talked to leadership and stakeholders all across the city, we had a statistically valid survey. We even visited a lot with staff, and so Kevin and his team assembled a group of twenty five staff members that represented the entire department. And the spectrum of tenures from people who had been at the department for less than six months to those who had been at. Been here for thirty years and they were, helped us establish a bedrock of of a lot of the strategy and the direction that this plan went. Uh, but we also did a heap of analyses that we uh, want want to talk to you about today, some of the highlights. The end goal, my goal today is to make sure you have a clear understanding of what's in this plan. So that when you have an opportunity to go through it in more uh, detail later, you know exactly what you're looking for. So the goals of this process, of course, was the foundation of that was an inclusive and accessible uh, community engagement process. We're going to talk a lot about what came out of that process. Develop a strategy for you, the Parks and Rec Department, that's really equitable to the entire community. Um, to utilize a lot of of best practices, not only here regionally within central Texas, but statewide and nationally. And shape the the financial sustainability and the overall organizational excellence of the department. And then to develop a dynamic and realistic action plan that has the right balance of ambition, but also realism. I wanted to spend a little bit of time also distinguishing most of the difference between a strategic plan and a map. So often, master uh, Parks and Recreation master plans are really kind of the predominant planning tool. A strategic plan is really about eighty percent focused internally on the organization itself, on how it does what it does. And defining operational priorities and getting stronger as an organization. A master plan is a process very similar, about eighty percent externally focused on infrastructure, assets, sites. So looking, really looking at where we need to develop new parks or completely refresh existing parks. About getting stronger as a public group, these two things really work in complement to each other. And there's a lot of things that we did in the strategic planning process that will make an upcoming master plan process even that much more efficient. You won't have to repeat things, for example, we did a statistically valid survey, which is typically uh, an aspect of a master plan. Those results are good for five years, so you won't need to repeat that. We also wanted to make sure that we were well aligned with the core values of a comprehensive plan. So in every, in the Parks and Recreation Department touches ground in every one of these areas, of course, it's very strong in places and spaces. But we wanted to honor the fact that it's really important to you all as leadership of the city, to have a high performing organization. To be reflective of communication and collaborations, a lot of partnerships involved, how Parks and Rec does what it does, providing public safety and smart. The process itself was broken into three major buckets, first of all, really, we spent a lot of time early on getting to know the system. Um, and then, then we were moving to more of the ideation phase of developing strategies where we're going tomorrow. And then the implementation phase of how we get. In this process, we just determined that really there's five pillars of this plan. And so the strategies are built around this, the analysis was also kind of built around a lot of this. One, of course, is natural resource management, so one thing that a a lot of folks don't think about and to go through a process like this. Is the city's Parks and Recreation Department is actually the the most extensive network of your green infrastructure within the. And so thinking about how you manage that as green infrastructure is really important. So whether it's tree canopy, whether it's landscaping, irrigation practices, I mean, I'm a fifth generation Texan, I, my hometown's Wimberly. Uh, it's the smallest town everyone's heard of in Texas, but uh, water is keen here in central Texas. And thinking about water wise practices and how we manage the landscape of our parks department is really important. But it's also about how we manage the the facilities themselves, how we program the system, how we engage the community all along. Throughout the process, staying well aligned with the community's interest and their priorities. And then also our organ, our own organizational effectiveness as being a a modern employer of choice. So in this process, we relooked at the vision and the mission statements of the Parks and Recreation Department. Just for clarification, a vision statement is typically a statement of what you want to be known for. A mission statement is a statement of how you want to accomplish that. Uh, we, of course, this was not a process where we changed the vision or mission of the. But it was an opportunity to modernize how we stated those vision and mission statements. So oftentimes, mission statements can be a whole paragraph. And it's really less is more, so we tightened up the language to have the vision being. The Parks and Recreation Department is a standard of excellence and innovation. And the mission is to provide residents and visitors with creative programs, superior parks and facilities, exceptional. So key recommendations, kind of the uh, looking at the answer at the back of the book. Really, we focused a lot on strategies around reducing environmental impacts, addressing aging infrastructure and access. You have a park system while you have some new facilities, you also have a park system that has a lot of assets, a lot of amenities that are older and they're tired. They're well loved and well used and well maintained, but addressing that aging infrastructure over time as well as access to our parks. Trails and connectivity continue to be, yes.
Could you flesh out just a little bit reducing environmental impacts?
Uh, yeah, for sure, so one of the strategies we recommend in here is looking at a phased approach, as you feel like is affordable for the city. On uh, converting some existing grass fields to artificial turf. We're looking at, uh, while that does come at a cost initially from a capital investment perspective. It reduces irrigation requirements by millions of gallons of water. It also optimizes the use of those facilities so that they're not so dependent on great weather, right? So relationship to inclement weather. Another example of that also is looking at more native landscaping where possible.
We're talking about ball fields specifically.
In that, that one example, yes, but also landscaping across the entire system, more water wise landscaping practice. Is that helpful?
That is, very much.
You bet. Uh, also, we came in this process, discovered in this process, this need for an additional indoor recreation facility, probably more into like a field house. Uh, we'll talk a little bit more about that later on. There is a need to really think about evolving the overall recreation program portfolio, we'll talk about that. Improving communications engagement in the community, making sure we really activate that larger ecosystem of other providers that. Assist us to meet in public's parts and recreation needs, being a modern employer of choice and also making sure we have parks for all. Alright, so now we're going to start with the results of the statistically valid survey. So this was a survey that was hard mailed to thousands of residents within Temple. And in order to get our statistical ability um. Account, we needed three hundred and fifty responses, we got three hundred and sixty five, which gave us a. A pl- a plus or minus confidence level of five point one and ninety five percent. So headlines, your parks and facilities are are very heavily used, with the most heavily being used at Lyons Park, Crossroads Park and Miller Park. The percentages of the percentage of respondents that indicated that they had visited these parks within the last twelve months. So sixty percent of your residents, according to the statistically valid survey, are likely accessing Lyons Park at least once a year. Parks and facilities with the highest condition ratings were Crossroads Park, Walker Pool and Salmon's Community Center. Fifty two percent of the respondents reported to have participated in at least two or three programs or events within the last year, that's a very high level. So your programs and events are very well loved. And the top three facility amenities and programs that were most important to households on the facility side. Farmers Market, multi use paved trails and a dog park. That I will make a comment about Farmers Market, so this is, this may or may not be a surprise to you, but one thing that we're seeing, uh, we've seen. It trends across all, the entire country and a lot of these surveys, since COVID, Farmers Market has appeared more in the top three as a. As a priority for communities, I think people are more interested and concerned about sourcing of food, et cetera. On program side, Farmers Market also number one, adult fitness and wellness and senior fitness. So we'll look at some detailed results now. So this is up around facilities, there are a number of questions in the survey about. Uh, how do the me or any member of my household have a need for these facilities, how well my needs are being met? And we cross tabulate those results to create a priority investment rating, high, medium and low. All things are a priority, but we need to, you know, find a way to rank them. So your high priority Farmers Market, multi use paved trails, dog park, multi use unpaved trails, indoor multipurpose recreation space. Five. Um, so one thing I also caution all of our clients and don't, this is one data point, don't. Look at this, it's like, oh, we can only get to things down here after we've done all of this, it's not intended to be a sequential list for development. It's just one data point as a lens to look at how the community prioritizes facilities when you're thinking about new parks or upgrading existing parks. This is that same exercise, but focused on programming, so top programs were Farmers Market.
And then after like a year of.
Public Music Arts and Theater. Arts and Culture Programs, so this was interesting, number three and number four is also all about arts and culture. And so arts and culture really kind of emerged as something that's very important to the community and that that's something should be reflected here. Senior Fitness and Wellness and recreational swim actually rounded out the top and high priorities. Haunted Hay Ride is not a low priority, it's a very important and very popular program. But what this, this exercise looks at is areas for investment, so basically this is reflected that we, we're doing great with the Haunted Hay Ride. Destined in one. This is one of my favorite questions on the survey, which is if I gave you a hundred dollar budget. You had to allocate it across these various priorities, how would you do so? Uh, and this is pretty typical, so number one is, I don't know if this little pointer works, no, it doesn't work on the screen. Uh, number one was taking care of what we already have, this is really important, it's actually very common. To see this as the highest priority improvements and maintenance of existing. Number two is development of new trails, that's also very common, uh, being very high. Number three was development of additional indoor rec facilities, number four, development of new parks. Five, renovation and improvement of existing pools. Six, development of new programs and events, seven, development of new athletic fields, and then of course, we did have another with a lot of writing responses. This is also one of my favorite questions, and this hopefully is affirmational to you all as you think about investment in the Parks and Recreation System. We asked the community, based on your perception of value, how would you support either improving existing funding, maintaining existing funding or reducing. Existing funding, and we're happy to report that ninety four percent respondents indicated they were supportive of either maintaining or increasing existing funding. To have the majority of fifty seven percent indicate increasing funding, so as your community. Appreciates the value and the return on investment you're making in Parks and Recreation.
Next question should have been, would you support a bond?
And I think there were some, there was a question around things like that, yes, um, I'm only giving you a very high, the, the. Survey report itself is two hundred pages long with the amount of detail that's in it, you can, you can rabbit hole in it pretty good. Uh, this was at things that we ask people, the the top four things that they would be most willing to fund. Of course, it's central Texas, triad trees and shade was number one. With developing additional trails and connectivity, improving existing parks in general, improving park restrooms, that's also. All very typical, trails and restrooms are some of our most popular amenities. And developing new indoor pool or aquatic center rounded out the top five.
Do you see that um. Uh, developing trails and restrooms, et cetera, do you see that? Uh, with most cities in here, because we, and the reason why is because we have a, we have a pretty large trail system.
Yeah.
And I don't know if, if that, the reason why that ranks so high is because we already have a large trail system. And maybe they think we need more amenities along the trail, or if that's just sort of a global answer.
It's trails and connect, trails are so important to people, um, even though you may have an extensive and robust system of trails already. The community is telling you this is still something important, so making connections where there's not.
It's not necessarily a lack.
Not necessarily a lack.
That we had, it's just that it's important.
Yeah, I mean, I was just presenting to the city council in Pocatello, Idaho last week. They have eighty miles of trails in that town and the community is still saying trails is very important to us. So uh, this is not to be, this is not uncommon.
Okay, is that helpful?
Yeah, yeah, very, thank you. Alright, so.
The question is, what are you willing to fund, so that, that, to me, that means more of.
Correct. And thinking about it also, it's, it's not just trails, it's, it's the aspect of community connectivity. So as you're thinking about how the community grows, it builds, develops out. Sidewalks, trail, trail planning and connectivity planning, non-motorized transportation planning is going to be very important. Cause that in the, in the end creates a much more walkable community, and I think that's what we're looking for. Alright, pivoting from the survey, looking, we did uh, with the help of Chuck's team, did a uh, fairly extensive uh, in assessment of sites and facilities. We looked at both parks as well as recreational facilities and we scored them across five criteria. Their overall and structural integrity, accessibility, connectivity, how well they're activated or programmed and how modern. Now, when you do a master plan process, a site and facility assessment would be much more detailed, that would be really uh. Eating back the layers of the onion in every single park in order to develop a capital improvement plan. That has park by park by park improvements, that was not the level of detail we were doing here in the strategic plan, we were looking at. These five categories to think about, to help identify which parks or facilities would be most um, prioritized for investment. And what types of investment would be most important to think about. I'm not trying to make you dizzy in this slide, but this is the result of the arcs assessments. You can see them, they're ranked from the parks that were considered the highest degree of uh, condition to those that were considered the lowest. The areas that I would draw your attention to where we have the strongest results, which is in connectivity, activation and programming. Infrastructure integrity and accessibility are areas we probably need to think about investment. Uh, the big red column is, is around public access to internet connectivity, the, again, this was a. An assessment on the parks, that's okay, so we're going to consider that to be a problem, this. Providing internet access in your parks is not going to be a priority, so it's okay to score it low on that condition. There are some communities that are doing that, wifi in parks. And if you look at how they are compared to each other on this table, this is the median, which was around the score of around seventy two. Uh, you can see how the, how they laid out, so as you think about going into a master plan process. You already have the intel on parks of this perspective, around which parks are most likely going to need the most investment and look. As to how they can be improved, which parks are doing quite well. We did that same exercise on facilities themselves. Uh, again, technology and connectivity here in the middle was the area that scored the lowest. But they also scored fairly high on infrastructure integrity, which was good. Uh, modernization isn't also an area where you probably need some investments. And this is how the facilities looked across, compared to each other with a mean of fifty six point seven. Wilson Recreation Center being assessed the greatest condition, Summit Recreation Center Pool probably needing some uh, more priority focus. Alright, we also looked at your capital investments in the system over the last thirty years and we adjusted that for inflation. So while one adjusted for inflation, you've basically invested over the last three decades, nearly eighty million dollars, a little over eighty million dollars. In Parks and Recreation System, now the map on the right, the bubbles indicate the size of the investment, the big red, everybody knows what the big red circle is? Yeah, so it was a very large project, it's your newest project, it's an extensive sports complex that also brings a lot of sports tourism to the community. Crossroads Park accounts for thirty percent of the total capital investment over the last thirty years, not to be surprised. But uh, the combination of Crossroads, Salmon's, Wilson and South Temple accounts for sixty three percent. One of the things that we also wanted to look here, because we recently, we do this analysis when we have the opportunity. Example, we did this in Louisville, Kentucky recently, and we discovered that of their ninety plus parks. Five of them are receiving like seventy, eighty percent of the capital investments, which was not equitable to the community. We wanted to see where investments were landing in the city, we have pretty good uh, distribution, which is good, like, we're not leaving certain sections of the city out. There is a little bit of a gap up in here in the north central area, but that's also a heavily industrial area, so having parks there doesn't necessarily make a lot of sense.
How does that total investment compare to other communities?
Uh, I'd say pretty average, um, you're not, I wouldn't say you're behind at all, I think you've been fairly assertive and aggressive with your capital investments of the last thirty years. Um, but you're definitely not behind. Um, but you're definitely not behind. Alright, now from moving from hard infrastructure to the actual recreation programming side of things. So you do have a very strong program portfolio. And I indicate you have over a hundred and fifty-four different program and service offerings that are being provided. So when I met with that twenty, group of twenty-five staff and I shared this information with them, I'm like, this is why you're so tired all the time, because you're doing a lot of programming. And I know as Leah is taking on the charge of evolving this recreational program, uh, portfolio, we came across a lot of findings in this part of the analysis that helped her in that process. But we did evaluate your programs across these five core program areas, aquatics, athletics, special events, the summit, Wilson, and Sammons Recreation. So here's some overall recommendations. Let's focus on quality over quantity. You'll see a slide here in a minute that helps inform some of that as well. I think there's a lot of opportunity to kind of not only evaluate our current programs, but think about programs that may not be meeting some of our performance objectives. Push, allowing them to fade off of the portfolio, maybe refresh and bring it back later. Enhancing our marketing and communications. So this is a common, um, finding that we find in parks and recreation. Of all the public services that you provide as a city, your parks and recreation department is actually the closest thing you have to a pure retail service. Because they are actively out there promoting programs and events, trying to get people to participate and respond. In a lot of cases involving fees and charges for their participation. And so that requires a lot more, more sophisticated marketing communications than your other types of, uh, public service like public works or fire and rescue. So they have to be much, uh, we recommend that within your communications team, that you have to add more horsepower there to be able to help them do that better. Improving the user friendliness of the website. This improving multi-general generational methodologies is a lot of fancy words for saying, let's bring the printed guide back. Because that was something that people, uh, really said, improving signage. And also it's really important, you have a very diverse community of a very large Latino community here. And so thinking about bilingual marketing materials will be important. And improving our overall athletic facilities, which are the backbone of how recreation programming happens. So here's some findings. This is the program lifecycle. So you have a fairly strong lifecycle profile with forty-six percent being in this introductory phase. That means of those hundred and fifty-four programs, forty-six percent of them are in this in brand new or just recently developed and rolled out, or they're in a steady growth phase. We do recommend that actually you should be somewhere between fifty and sixty percent. So this is an opportunity to grow this. But it's not terribly far off. You've got twenty-six percent, which we'd consider in your mature phase. And this is where Leah gets a lot of insight from this analysis on how she wants to think about evolving the program portfolio. Twenty-seven percent are in this declining or saturation phase. That means they may be canceled because we don't have sufficient registration or it's just continually low registration. We recommend no more than about ten percent. So as she goes through the process of evaluating each program, if you have the results of this analysis, more program. This is where I would start with focusing on quality over quantity. We also went through a process of classifying all your programs. So all your programs are mission aligned, but they fall in the spectrum of whether or not they are essential services, which are more closely aligned with your public mandate. These are the programs that have the greatest community benefit. So things like, uh, learn to swim, because it's not only good for the participant, it's a public safety initiative. Move on up into more important services. This percentages here, by the way, are typical for what you should expect on cost recovery for the programs within each one of these classifications. So those that are essential services are those that are most heavily subsidized. Very free or very low cost to the user. Important services are in the middle. The example of important services is things like youth athletics, because it's very important, uh, that we provide that as a community service. But also there's a lot of individual benefit that comes out of it. And then value-added services are those that are almost purely the value of the program is enjoyed by the participant themselves. Those should be probably priced in a way that they're closer to a hundred percent cost recovery. So this is how your programs fall out. That's good. What, where we would be concerned is if you were really low in essential services. I've actually had that conversation with some clients in the past where it's like you're not doing enough of what you should, must be doing as a public service. So your distribution is really good. And this is the various pricing strategy that you use across the different core program areas. You have a broad use of cert, of strategies, which is good. Um, your most diverse strategies are in family programs and races and events. And you could possibly grow into more diverse strategies around day of the week or cost recovery goals, uh, prime time, which is non-prime time, et cetera. And this is all the types of marketing strategies. So you also have a very strong approach to, uh, marketing. But we wanted, we, we recommended bringing back the printed program guide and it happened before we finished the plan. So you already are back in this. Really thinking about multilingual materials, thinking about a possibility of an app, developing a Twitter account and X account and considering e-education opportunities. We also recommended developing mini-business plans with each one of those core program areas. And we gave you an outline of what we thought that should include. That'll help the process of being able to evaluate programs about how they're meeting expectations. And then this is the evaluation process we create program to approve. So you can maybe move from a hundred and fifty-four to something closer to a hundred and twenty different offerings. Allow you to focus on quality over quantity. Alright, talked about facilities, we talked about programs. Now we're talking about the organization itself. So overall, uh, based on an evaluation of what your needs are to provide services, the current size, sophistication, evolution of your system, we made some recommendations around staffing. I mentioned already about, oh, the code here is recommended, uh, existing recommended in twenty-six and recommended in twenty-seven. We did recommending more dedicated focus and horsepower and communications and marketing department that supports parks and rec. Also looking at a volunteer coordinator, you need to add parks division director, which we'll get into more in a minute. Because that side of the organization is very flat. And you have a lot of employees reporting to a very few number of supervisory staff, and that is inefficient. So on the recreation side of the house, this is how it looks at a, at the top level. You have two division directors under Leah. The first division director, we recommend adding more, uh, capacity in special events. This is something that's very important to the community. It's also something very time consuming. You need more capacity here. We recommend that in twenty-six. On the second division director, the theme here is actually an evolution of how you think about and develop programming. We recommend this group on the right. So right now, the way programming happens is it happens by these staff at these facilities. They develop their own programs for their own facilities. They do a great job. It's not a problem. But in order to get some consistency across the entire system and to take advantage of innovations and new, new ideas, we are seeing the most sophisticated programs, uh, actually having this kind of a structure where you evolve to having program leads for certain areas that are in charge of developing programs for the entire system. And they rely upon these local staff to be able to facilitate them. Uh, that really creates a lot of consistency, reduces a lot of redundancy, and allows you to really take on best practices. So we recommend over the next five years, maybe growing into. Alright, Chuck's side of the house. So on park and park ma, park operations, one of the things we wanted to highlight here is a community's parks department is basically your landscaping service for the entire city. And so oftentimes it's not uncommon, the parks department is actually responsible for maintaining a lot of acres that are not parks. They may be, uh, boulevard, median boulevard, be, uh, boulevards, they may be the community entrance, entrances, areas around city buildings. And so actually this largest section of the pie is the non-park lands that, uh, the parks is responsible for maintaining. Seventy, seven hundred and seventy-five acres is actually developed parks, two hundred and fifty acres of undeveloped parks and four hundred acres of special parks and, uh, special use parks. I mentioned, we wanted to, uh, get away from being such a flat organization. You'll see this on the next slide. So we recommend hiring a second division director. Also, based on a lot of feedback and what, what Chuck's and his team is experiencing out in the field, the need to bring on park rangers that are not law enforcement staff, but actually help us monitor community uses parks and ensure that people are behaving. Alright, so the first, uh, direct division director, we recommend adding a couple of crew leaders. In the absence of these crew leaders, all of these people report to one person. So that's a, that's a lot to manage and it creates inefficiencies in the system. We also recommend adding contract management, uh, to help bring that best practice to, to bear. On the second division director, the same thing, really recommending some additional mid-level leadership. Because in the absence of these potential new positions, all of these people were order, uh, really a limited amount of supervisory staff. Uh, this one position here, the lead park inspector, I would mention is a reclassification of existing. Okay, so we also developed and came forward with a lot of different key performance indicators or KPIs, both on the park side and the recreation side. We do not recommend that you use all of these KPIs. This is the list of possible KPIs. We actually had a client recently, Carrollton, uh, North Texas, where they were managing way too many KPIs. They were spending more time monitoring KPIs than they really needed to be out in the field. And so we recommended for them to reduce those, but getting both in parks and in programming, a set of five to eight different KPIs that are most impactful for you will be important. Alright, now we move into financial recommendations. So you do not currently have a formal cost recovery strategy. You have some general unspoken expectations that the parks department is going to generate earned revenues through fees and charges, et cetera. But that's not actually formalized into an approach. This strategic plan is not the place to actually develop a cost recovery policy because that is something that needs to be done on its own. But we can create a groundwork for it, and that's what we did, establish some framework. Cost recovery policy is something that involves you all as council, because it, it in, involves these sensitive aspects of fees and charges and things like that. But we didn't, what we want to create is that framework that gives you the ability, the launching point to be able to go further on this area. So again, those essential programs, important programs, value added, the degree in which they are subsidized versus being priced at a near a hundred percent. Where this is kind of the approach that we recommend. We did actually go through, in this, in the plan itself, you'll find, uh, recommended cost recovery ranges that are fairly broad at this point uh, for every single program that you have. Alright, maintenance funding. So the way we wanted to break down maintenance funding was we wanted to look at annual maintenance costs per acre. And based on your, it's the budgets from twenty-twenty-two up until your twenty-twenty-five original budget, you're basically right at thirty-eight hundred and forty-seven dollars an acre for years, what it costs to maintain the park system. Based on things that we know need to happen, so including the staffing, uh, recommendations, we think that this needs to really grow over the next five years to closer to forty-five hundred dollars an acre. That's not out of range with national standards. Most communities are between four and six thousand dollars an acre. So we're not recommending you're at the top end of that. But we think given the amount of investment that's needed, the order of magnitude of investment that's needed around supporting the parks maintenance side, this needs to grow forty-five hundred dollars a year over time. Now, this is what it looks like. This was your, um, original, this is your current budget. This is where you are per acre. This is actually the cost per cabin, basically spending about ninety-five dollars per person on maintaining parks on an annual basis. We recommend you grow this in the stair-step method up to forty-five hundred dollars over time. What that would involve is a year-over-year increase, a total increase from, so if we flash forward to twenty-thirty and look back into where you were in twenty-twenty-four, in twenty-thirty, you'd be investing about one point seven million dollars more annually in parks maintenance. That's going to help you address preventative maintenance, aging facilities, all of that. You, we did not do an evaluation of your total asset value. My guess is a system of your size and sophistication, you actually have a total asset value, not including the value of the land that these facilities sit on, of probably somewhere between two hundred and fifty and three hundred million dollars. So investing a little more and making sure we're taking care of it. Remember, taking care of what we already have is the most important priority to people. It's not a bad priority. So then we looked at total operations. So we looked at recreation, parks, golf, administration, and cemeteries. We did not include, parks department currently man, oversees and manages the Mayborn Convention Center. We did not include that in this analysis because it's, it's a little bit atypical for a parks department. It's okay. But we didn't want it to skew how we would compare Temple to other departments across the country, so we didn't include it. We looked at, here's we are in, in twenty-two, twenty-three, twenty-four, and twenty-five. You've been steadily continuing to invest more in parks and recreation. So you're currently a little north of twenty-one million dollars a year. That is not out of line. You are up with national standards. You're about seventy-eight hundred dollars per acre overall, uh, total cost going into it. The, uh, national average is around eight thousand, so you're close, very close to the national average. It's not bad. And this is how that is being funded across the various divisions, per, uh, as a proportion of the entire budget. As you can see, uh, recreation really got in the back from it starting this year, uh, and that's good. Uh, so we're gonna, you're gonna see on the next slide, we want to kind of even out that balance. What we recommend of a community your size, a system your size, age, the sophistication of your system, you are really probably just south of twenty-four million dollars as an optimal run rate. You're close, you're very close, you're almost there. We recommend over the next five years, you find, find a way to get, be able to get there. That brings your cost per acre up well in line with national standards. And this is how we would recommend that be distributed across those various divisions. Whereby twenty-thirty, both recreation and parks, there's kind of an even split. Golf, we hold golf at nine percent, administration at eight percent, and cemeteries at two.
Do, do those numbers include capital investments?
No, this is operations. So.
But. Equipment?
Yes, minor capital, yes. So equipment purchases, things like that, mowers, but not major capital. We didn't want to leave you hanging like, okay, well, you maybe need to invest a little bit more in parks over the next five years. But there's various ways in which you can do that. We provided some funding and revenue strategies that were focused on dedicated fundraising, funding options, earned income, and also financial support. Conclusion of the whole plan, focus on improving communications and engagement with the community. We're collecting a lot of data, but we don't, we don't have the horsepower to actually make, use the data to make strategic decisions. So thinking about how we get better at that, evolving that recreational programming portfolio and evaluating it regularly. Pursue capital investments that improve operational efficiency, environmental sustainability, and optimal use. Better resourcing of park ops and maintenance, elevating preventative maintenance, which would, could be done under what we recommend. Developing a more formal cost recovery plan, working towards an annual run rate that's closer to twenty-four million dollars and actively pursuing and activating new funding and revenue strategies. There's a lot of information, but now you know what's in that book. Uh, so I'm happy to answer any.
That's impressive data. I don't know if we ever had it broken down like that. I don't remember. It puts it in a useful, does, like.
You said it felt like the, the survey was a good cross from the city.
It was, and so we always partnered with a firm called TC Institute. Team here, then, I think you've actually done other surveys using them. We've done over four hundred surveys with them. They're so talented. They monitor the survey results as they come in to make sure that the demographics of the respondents are reflective of the demographics of the city at large. So that we're not undersampling or oversampling any portion of the community. And then can adjust as needed. So yes, I would say with a high level of confidence, that survey is really strong.
Some questions? It's impressive information. I appreciate that.
Glad to do it.
I thought you were gonna have some questions.
They may be overwhelmed with this one. They're like, oh my gosh, there was so much information.
My second time seeing.
I really liked your, um, cost recovery.
Yeah.
Chart and how you put that together. That's, that's good.
Yeah, and the, um, you know, the community benefit versus the individual benefit. I've never, never really thought about it that way, but that's. That, um.
I knew we had a number of programs. I didn't realize we had fifty-nine. Yeah, it's a regular hundred and twenty. Yeah, that's it's a regular hundred points.
No, I mean, it's I I could, yes, around one twenty, one thirty probably is your sweet spot. I I don't want to uh, be held accountable to that number for sure, because that's all really ultimately.
Thinking, yes.
So what Leah and her process needs to produce. But yes, I would think that's probably more manageable. Yeah. And yeah, you you need the defensibility about how you're making pricing policies. And so thinking about how aligning pricing with how benefits are enjoyed across communities is really important.
Yeah. And someone, you know, that's working toward an individual, the 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 individual benefit person. I think in most cases, they're more than happy to pay for.
Right.
You know, as as much as they need to to be able to enjoy their specific hobby or whatever that is.
Right. Yeah, um, is that if I'm participating in something where it's the benefit of that is almost exclusively enjoyed by myself. More tolerant, maybe closer to what it costs. Then it would be something that is more of a broad community. So hopefully we've given you a really good framework on developing something like this more formally.
I was asking, it's kind of a very general question, but I want a very specific answer. So I mean, I apologize for that. But along this this cost recovery analysis there. Is there a sweet spot like it's, um, do you ultimately need to say we're we're going to recover across all of these programs, hundred and fifty-four programs? That our goal is to recover sixty percent of the overall cost or forty percent?
Great question. And remember, cost recovery is more than just programs. It also includes things like facility rentals. Right, renting pavilions or renting spaces in a rec center. It really depends upon the individual culture of every community. What the, you know, the city, I did a youth services master plan last year for the city of San Antonio. And because of the demographics of that community, the Parks and Recreation Department and the Parks Board was very intent that they that their cost recovery and programming was zero, because they subsidized everything. So that it really depends on the culture of the community. I see most communities, when you think about cost recovery for a Parks and Recreation Department overall, is in the fifty to sixty percent range. It's still very much a public service, so it does need to have some level of subsidy. But it also provides a lot of private benefits, so it should also have the ability to generate revenue to cover its costs. Yeah, San Antonio is an outlier. Very interesting. We also see, like I did a parks master plan for uh, Johns Creek, Georgia, which is a very wealthy suburb of Atlanta. And they have a very intentional cost recovery strategy of eighty-five percent. But their median household income in that town is over half a million dollars.
They can handle it.
They can handle it. Yeah. Anything else?
Kevin, what's your department's biggest takeaway from all that?
There's a uh, there's a lot, you know, when I was up there talking that uh, there's a lot of things we can need to put on a work plan. So that doesn't settle the ship. There's things in there that doesn't need dollars, uh, because you know, our staff, uh, that what he's, I tell you, the probably the best thing, what the best thing that's came out of it is we created that team of twenty-five, we're down not to twenty. That uh, part of the, so you did the community survey, but we did an internal department survey, right? And uh, we knew it was going to be uh, there's good and there's bad. We all know we're gonna, we can do things better. So uh, we actually formed this group and we actually met with it last week. We meet a regular basis now and uh, we try to communicate. They bring stuff to us, we send stuff back to them. We've got part timers on it. Uh, I think one is just a communication is one big piece of it is uh,
Within the department.
Just in the department, uh, because we we are getting so big and people are like, well, I didn't know that. You know, there's a lot going on. Uh, so that is one thing we took from that plan, but there's a lot in there that we need to uh, now just that's been signed off on. It is nice to, I think for her, Simon will speak for her is so when you have a program coordinator or manager, you're going to create a program. What am I supposed to charge for this thing, right? Uh, I think it's easy, you're gonna send a trip down to New Braunfels for a day or something. Okay, that's going to be a hundred percent recovery, if not more. But uh, if it's youth, maybe it's the different. And so I think that's the one I'm probably the most excited for uh, coming up is just trying to get, give the staff direction. I'll come up with these programs, get the quality over quantity, but how do you price it? Because it has really not been, uh, there's no no magic formula. It's just been, I say, boy, nearly, but it's.
It's been personality based. So other than now, it's been very personality based. How long those decisions have been made? Now you have a strategic framework that Leah can kind of align all that around.
You also have a number to meet of one point seven million dollars. That looks good.
Um, additional park maintenance.
That 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 all depends on you.
No, no, it depends on your pricing structure.
Yeah, I will, to me, I will tell you this, uh, not just because she sat across the table. Uh, but and you know, we we are going through our accreditation process to become nationally accredited, right? And one of the things that stands out uh, is we need a strategic plan. And uh, you know, Brian's, Brian is aware of this. He's got people on his staff that, you know, they are part of these visiting teams, but uh, the city's strategic plan, the business plan, right? That would have sufficed by the letter of what our national organization is looking for. But then Brandon made a great point is that checks the box, but does that really, does that, what you see in the business, but does that, does that the, you know, does that come out to all that stuff you just saw there? And I said, no way. She said, well, you just got to figure out. And so uh, I think she's the one that made it clear, hey, don't use, don't use this plan. You need your own plan and uh, and so I'm glad we went back and see what should we be doing where we are, so.
What's the overall ballpark? What's the overall budget of the parks department? Twenty-five, is that what I saw?
Right, uh, operations twenty-one right now. We recommend you more towards closer to twenty-four.
Yeah.
And we feel like that's going to help you do what you do even better, taking care of facilities, taking care of parks, providing programs, all.
Like that cost per acre.
Yeah. When you break it down into number like this, it helps see it for what it really is. I mean, um, eighty-seven hundred dollars an acre per year is not unreasonable when you think about the investment of keeping that public asset really.
Lots of people and equipment.
Yeah. And remember, all the park, all the acres in the city that they're also managing that are not parks. They also, just that, all that's included. Yeah, you real, people don't realize that at first, they, oh, wow. But our department is the city's landscaping service.
And just just go look at uh, uh, one of the main things is, we've heard this when we've gone through some bond process before. Yeah, they've looked at me and said, why do I want to, this does tell me when, why do I want to give you something new? And they can point where you still have old agent infrastructure. And we've done a great job uh, trying to to, you know, remedy that. Just look at the Silverstone playground, just when you start putting new stuff in now, I've already got comments for the trail that went in. Uh, so it's uh, yeah, it's a, that's the, that's another big thing I think that stands out is how do we how do we address the agent infrastructure?
In the master plan process that I think you're thinking about doing in the next few months, or at least initiating in the next few months. That will take that information and answer those questions like very specifically, what should playground replacement look like over the next ten years? What should ball field innovate uh, investments look like over the next ten years? And connecting to parks that don't have trails connected to the number you said. Okay, anything else today?
The mayor's got something running up there.
Well, you're you're preying on something.
I know, but I'm afraid, I don't want to ask a dumb question. There's no dumb question. What's the, what's the balance? Do you want quantity? Super nice park, not as many, super nice parks that the people that are into that will go do that? Or do you want um, I say quantity or quantity? You want quality that, you know, that's super nice but fewer of them? Do you want quantity? But I think what you're going to say is it's somewhere in there.
It's the right balance of no, because so you have different types of parks. Parks are designed differently, they function differently.
Yeah.
You have everything from a small pocket park, which is like less than an acre that may have a memorial or something on it. Neighborhood parks that are really serving people on a more daily basis, close to where they live. Community parks that have broader amenities that serve larger areas and then regional parks that serve not just the city itself, but the people that come to the city.
So if you want a cost recovery.
Oh, yeah.
You would, you would lean maybe to more larger.
It's you have, you have to have the right blend. And it when in the master plan process will help you determine what your current blend is and what it should be uh, based on community needs. I mentioned that community in uh, Georgia, Johns Creek. It's really interesting. They were intentionally not providing any neighborhood parks. And the reason was is because the type of community it was, they had so many HOAs and HOA parks and and those types of communities, they didn't need to get be in the business of nature.
And probably I would think something like that, probably people are also more mobile, right? In a, in a, in a highly affluent community, you're going to have two and three cars per household and I think a lot of our parks, people walk like Miller Park.
Yes.
Miller Park is in a, in a um, a lower socioeconomic area. And you can drive by there in the spring or the fall on any Sunday, Saturday or Sunday, and there is full of people.
Yeah.
Doing it, you know, a myriad of things and all those lot, they're they're the neighborhood people.
Yeah, and you have a lot of partnership opportunities. You're not the only game in town. You've got the school districts that are, they maintain facilities that public uses for recreational purposes, particularly playgrounds. At elementary schools and middle schools. You've got Temple College. We had a great conversation with the president of Temple College, thinking about the things that she could do on campus that also meet public recreational needs. We even had Kevin and I had a really interesting conversation with leadership of Baylor Southern Life about how they might be interested in having more of a presence in a community center. Uh, we saw, we've seen this in Norman, Oklahoma, where the local hospital invested in the, in the um, up to ten million dollars in the construction of a new recreation center, because they put a therapy clinic in it. So really thinking about those partnerships, I think is really important.
Very good, thank you. You bet.
I would also note that this is um, only noting direct cost recovery and not even getting at the, you know, the indirect cost benefit of having part uh, robust park system in your community. We're out of a recent economic development. We've been there, we heard from the current president, P D C, or current chair of P D C that we met with a colleague uh, recently, and our first five questions were related to parks and what, you know, what type of um, opportunities for recreation activity existed? Because that's, they want to bring their company to a place where they will be able to attract talent. And the people who they want to work at their companies, they're concerned about the quality of the of the community that they live in and what recreational and park activities and um, assets they'll have um, access to. So this is only the direct piece of that, not the indirect piece that is equally of important and impactful.
Yeah. And probably drives more dollars than any cost, every program. You know, one, one or two nice economic development prospects. That's well comes to the city budget.
And I would say, as you're thinking about the potential new investment strategies, it's not a bad thing to consider doing an economic impact assessment of your parks and recreation department. I think you would be really surprised. For the last thirteen years, I chaired the park advisory board for Texas State Parks. Helped them get to in twenty nineteen constitutionally protected operational funding and a billion dollar land, land acquisition fund. A lot of that was successful in being able to couch the economic power of our state park system. It came, it turned out that annual economic in uh, impact from our state parks is nearly a billion dollars. I think if you did that same type of assessment here in Temple, you would find you have several hundred million dollars a year in economic impact that's being driven.
Very good, thank you. All right, um, it is four thirty-six and I will uh, adjourn the workshop in Temple City Council. And we have no executive session, so we.
I do want to make a note that Jan and I chose to start time of this meeting. Clearly that that is personal.